September 20th, 2022, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Aaron, would you mind leading us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
McKeever.
Here.
Myers, here. Wireball.
Here.
Potter.
Here.
Sherrod.
Here.
Spiegel.
Here.
Young.
All right, we have before you the minutes from the August 23rd, 2022 regular council meeting minute, council meeting, sorry. Does anybody have any additions, corrections? If not, may I have a motion to accept?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Spiegel, second by Mr. Potter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You also have the September 8th, 2022 rescheduled regular council meeting minutes. Does anybody have any additions or corrections? If not, may I have a motion to accept?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wireball, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak, we did have a request for Mr. O'Brien from Omni Fiber. Go ahead.
We're ready?
Yep.
Well, thank you for having me. I'm Jeff O'Brien with Omni Fiber. I'm the manager of business development, and I wanted to do a brief presentation for you this evening to let you know that what we've been working with John and Jeff Wagner on supplying fiber to the home for the city of Bucyrus. Don't worry about taking any notes because my presentation is all off of our website. So omni-fiber.com, it will have everything that I'm going to be talking about, and then I'll show you on the website any questions that you may have that you might not bring up tonight. You can go onto the website, and if the website doesn't answer your questions, I will leave cards here on the table for all of you over there, okay? But thank you for having me, I appreciate it. All right, so when you log on, omni-fiber.com, here's our homepage. Basically, you're going to find predominantly what we're talking about here is internet. We do offer phone, we do offer video as well, okay? So the big three. But internet is our driving force of what we're doing here. Real quick, you have the ability to check the availability of your area. Wi-Fi is the future. Is everybody familiar with what fiber is?
No.
No?
Not me, excuse me, but we may be, but you're being viewed by potentially hundreds of people, maybe not know what it is, so.
Very, very, very good. I can, I'll explain that very quickly. Currently, if you have cable services into your home, it's coax. So we're talking about metal, and we're talking about electrical signals, okay? With fiber, we're talking about glass and light. So it's a technology that's been around for a long time, it's a technology that's going to be around for a lot longer time. Somebody asked a question when I was, was probably about 10 years ago, they said, "So when is fiber technology going to be replaced?" And the engineer said, "When somebody figures out how to replicate something that goes faster than the speed of light." And the guy says, "Okay, it's going to be around a while." So, fiber optics, what we offer and how we differ is fiber is a symmetrical service, when we're talking about internet now, right? And so, for example, let's say you have a cable service where right now you may have 400 megs down, correct? And then you may have 20 megs up. With fiber, you, we're going to offer three packages, and I'll show those to you in a minute, but it's going to be 500 megs, one gig, and two gig to start. If you buy a 500-meg package from Omni, you're getting 500 megabits down, you're getting 500 megabits up. One gig down, one gig up. That's a symmetrical service, okay? What also differs us from your cable networks, once I said metal delivery on the coax, electrical signals, we're delivering via light, no electricity. The only electricity that will be supplied in the city of Bucyrus will be in the basement of this building, right, John? Downstairs is where our head end is going to be, that's where the main power is going to be for the whole city, okay? The other thing that differs from us is that when you're using, say, cable services for your internet, and you notice that the cables will tell you it's a best-case scenario, so if you're buying 400 megs down and 20 megs up, depending on what time of day, right? You get home from work, you get done eating, you go out, you hop on the internet, and you're like, "Wow, this isn't as fast as it was this afternoon when I came home for lunch." It's a shared network, basically, is what you get on that type of system. With us, you will have your own spectrum of light from your home all the way back to the head end. So if you're getting a 500-megabit down, 500-megabit up service, you, did your LAN connection into the router that we will supply, you will see 500-plus down, 500-plus up. You are not sharing with anybody else, okay? Generally, the fiber services was reserved for businesses, now we're providing it to the home. We also will provide our services to businesses as well. We're going to be working with John, the mayor, and their team to be able to set up all the city offices, city buildings, city locations to connect via fiber, okay? Also, too, one of the things, and I want to always bring this up, but how many people here have ever seen the album cover, Pink Floyd's Dark Side of the Moon? Okay? That's a great example. You see the one beam of light going into the prism, correct? And you see how many different covers coming out on the other side? So for every pair of fiber, so you got one pair of fiber, which is about just a little bit larger than a hair, one sends, one receives, and you can send and receive at the same time on a fiber optic network, you can't do that on your cable networks. And what happens is that light is broken down, so for one pair of fiber, send and receive, right? We can get 64 homes that have their own individual connection back to our head end. So, always wanted to use that reference, of Dark Side of the Moon, was actually the first album I ever bought when I was 12.
You're dating yourself.
I am, and, but anyway, back to this, I wanted to talk to you about who we are, and we got into the fiber conversation, I want to make sure that you guys know who we are. We were founded in 2022. A lot of the folks that are on our team now, we're working with a company called MetroNet, who's doing the same thing, and they've been doing it for 15, 20 years, is what we're going to be doing now, in a lot of the small to medium-sized cities across Ohio, Michigan, Pennsylvania, and then we're going to be branching out into other states as well. We have, right now, our offices are in Mason, Ohio, it says Cincinnati on the website, but we actually moved in July, we are now in Mason, Ohio. And for those of you familiar with the Cincinnati area, Mason, Ohio is a stone's throw from Kings Island. So that's where our offices are, over by Kings Island. Our call center is in Milford, which is about a seven iron from Mason to Milford. So we're a Cincinnati-based company. And when you go in and you read about us, you will also get a chance to meet our team, and our chief executive officer.
Derek Zuko.
Brian Ross, CFO. Andres Tovar. Chief Revenue Officer, Steve Gable. Chief Operations Officer, okay? Those four have combined over 80 years of experience in building out fiber optic networks. So a lot of experience on the team. And we, this will tell you some of the cool stuff here, Omni's bringing fiber to Tiffin, $10 million investment, we will be investing $7.2 million in the city of Bucyrus. Now, the nice thing about the $7.2 million is, it's coming from Oak Hill Capital. They funded us out to start $250 million. So, no federal, state, or local money is needed, it's 100% funded by us, okay? All right, then we go down, now, we get to the good stuff here. We're going to go to some of the service areas. There we go. And the reason I'm here, here's our top 15 cities. Currently, right now, we are building in Clyde, Dover, and Shelby, and these are the ones coming soon, obviously, you can see Bucyrus, and we have already worked with John and his team, and our engineering and operations team on going through what we call the construction handoff, where we've got all the new areas, the potential development over the next 18 months to two and a half years, from residential developments, industrial, where we need to put fiber when we're putting it in, right? And some of those places that we identified could have been public areas like parks to put cameras in, or to have internet access. We've had a lot of cities that have asked us, "Hey, we have these big festivals during the summer, and we'd like to be able to have the patrons, be able to have wireless, you know, access to the internet." So we work very closely with the cities, every one of them, and going through this, we're in the process right now of being able to, we, Jeff and John have already taken us to show us where we're going to be able to put our head in, and also where we're going to be able to store the spools of fiber and conduit in one of their locations. So we're pretty far down the road right now. We're actually finishing up our high-level design of engineering, and I have shared the high level, or, I'm sorry, the low-level design, where we actually get down to the individual house. And I shared that with Jeff and, and it's very detailed. So when we get done with that, we're going to go ahead and sit down with Jeff and John again, and the appropriate individuals from the city that need to be in on that meeting, and we're going to go through, we're going to go through each and every street, we're going to go through everywhere where our fiber bolts are, what we're going to be doing, and then we get the feedback. We're planning on starting construction right now, tentatively, the last John and I, when we met with our operations team, we're looking to start in November, okay? And that would probably see us finishing up sometime in April, that was, yeah, around April. One of the good things that, the way we're going to install this network, we're going to be working with the city on kind of putting it into quadrants of building out this area first, and then when that gets complete, we'll do our testing, we'll turn that area up. Then as we go into the next area, get that completed, we'll turn that area up after testing. So we're not going to wait till we're totally done with the whole city before we turn it up and offer services. We will start it, and we'll kind of do it in quad, generally, quadrants of four, the larger cities could end up being five or six, so. All right, so that's that. Now let's get to this part of it, the internet, because I know you're all probably wondering what you're going to get, and I got a slide in here that's going to show that, and let's just take it down here to that slide. Okay, Wi-Fi, we already talked about that. Now, when we talked about the 500-meg, one gig, two gigs, that's just the starting packages that we're coming out with for residential. Early, middle next year, we may be offering up to five gigs for the home. We will be offering our services to businesses as well, the small, medium-sized businesses, we will be offering them to enterprise businesses, and then we'll get into the schools and hospitals and things, and we're going to kind of work that all together. But they're working on right now the business packages, and what they're going to be offering, and what the options are to different businesses, not only from a speech perspective, but what type of support that they want on the backend. This is a good, this is one of my favorite slides. We're a little different, no contracts, no hidden fees, everything, I mean, no taxes on internet, but on the video and the phone, if you do choose to get that. Now, the one thing I will say upfront, and it is on the website, is that you cannot just get phone, or you cannot just get video, you got to have internet to be able to get the video or the phone. So you can do video and internet, or you can do phone and internet, or obviously, you can do all three. We have no hidden fees, free installation always, always going to be free installations, unlimited data, we don't have any caps on the downloads, uploads, it's, once we turn that thing on, knock yourself out. Premium Wi-Fi will be included, so we'll be using a Wi-Fi 6 series, which is the latest technology, and what we will also do is consider it's a mesh network, so depending on how your home is laid out, we will strategically put the routers and extensions into your house basement, upstairs, middle floors, whatever, to make sure that no matter where you go in your house, you look at the bars on your phone, and you're on your home Wi-Fi, that no matter where you go, those bars stay the same, they're going to be full, okay? No additional cost on that, we take care of all that. Our local customer service, as I said, Milford, Ohio, down in, on the northeast side of Cincinnati, discounts, active military, veterans, first responders, teachers, they're available for up to $50, $50 a month. Here's your pricing, $55 for 500 megs, one gig, $75, and two gigs, $95. So, we can go ahead, and you can go here, now, this is the start shopping piece, I'm going to let you do that on your own because I don't want to hold you up. Play with this, because I'm going to show you one more on the TV portion of it. We do offer TV. Now, we're partnering, we have what we call Omni Fiber TV, which is going to be 60-plus channels. No local channels, $40 a month. When you go into the website, which is why I want you to feel semi-comfortable on using this, you have an opportunity where you can go in and you can get recommendations. So you go into your recommendation, I'm going to do this real quick, I don't want to hold you up, I want to get the questions, okay? It's going to ask you for your zip code, then it's going to pop up a whole bunch of channels, it's going to have you click on the ones you got to have. These are the ones I got to have. The neat thing about the way our website's set up, not only will it show you the packages that DirecTV streaming has that would be offered, it will also come up and show you packages that Hulu slings. It'll bring all of it up and tell you what the comparisons are, and then you can say, "Oh, okay, all right, I've already got that, yeah, I'll go with that." So ultimately, you know, I want to show you a couple things here, too, just on this real quick. This is some of the things that you may see when we're doing builds, you're going to see folks hanging fiber on the poles, buried cable, that's going to be your underground, there'll be fiber going underground in certain easements where there's no poles. And then these are going to be your fiber vaults, you'll be seeing those, will be in We generally try to put them, and strategically put those in places that you can't really see them. They're not above ground, they are below ground. And you'll see the spools of conduit and fiber that we have, and then they will do all, once the construction's done, they will do all the raking, the seeding, to put everything back, to make it look as good as it possibly can, to look new again. If you're not satisfied, on the website, there is a form, you go back in, and you can go ahead, put your address in, what's wrong, and then somebody will reach out to you immediately and schedule a time, and have someone come out and take a look at that, okay? I've gone through, I need questions, does anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
Do you see any potential for hiring, having local jobs created based on what you're wanting to offer here?
I do. Back on, if we go back, let's see here, let's go back right here. Let's go all the way back. Oh, well, that didn't work, okay. Anyway, on the Omni Fiber website, on the very first page, there will be jobs that are available that we have out there right now, and we do have jobs up in this area that we're looking for. We're looking for technicians right now to work with Omni. Also, it's a great question, if you know any contractors that would do this type of, you know, the construction, anything like that, you can reach out to me, or you can put that information on the website, and give the names, and our, Derek, Zuko, the CEO, they, they actually, they look at this stuff. So every time that something comes in off of the website, they get pretty excited because that means somebody's looking at it. So they do look at that, so in answer to your question, yes.
And what we can do on our website is we'll create a page devoted to the Omni Fiber project, where we'll keep the residents and everybody informed of the progress as it moves forward, and we'll also link to the Omni Fiber website, so if you're used to navigating to the city of Bucyrus's website, you know, we'll have a link there that you can go directly to Omni Fiber and look at all their information, but we definitely want to make sure we're keeping everybody informed as the project moves forward, so we'll definitely do that.
That's a perfect place for me. Pardon me if I interrupted anybody, but you said, "Keep us informed," this is the first time I've heard of this. And you're going to put, and I'm not trying to be nasty or anything, it's probably a good thing, but if you're going to put equipment in the building, shouldn't public lands and buildings, shouldn't that go through their committee? Is there a contract for this? What's the legality of that? How's that affect our deal with Spectrum where we, the funds are? You know, I got a lot of questions, but it sounds like you guys are rolling this out by November, and I haven't heard the first thing about it. What about you guys?
That's why we're, that's why we're here today. It's moving quickly, no doubt about it, but that's why we're bringing, that's why we're bringing Jeff here today.
You know, are we going to, I know there's a gentleman in town that does this, and if we throw all the business to this guy without a bid, is, what, are you, you know, we in for another lawsuit?
I think I may be able to go ahead and answer that with a blanket question. We're franchised in the state of Ohio as a video provider, so we have access to every right-ofway in the state of Ohio. We don't need any permission. We have access to anywhere we want to go. What we've done is, instead of just coming in and doing that, we sit down for months and months at a time, working with each of these cities, so that we can build that partnership to be able to do the things that your city wants to do, connecting certain city offices, things like that, seeing where potential growth is. That's how we go about doing that, okay?
Yeah, and I completely understand that, and that's great, but, you know, you hear the old one, "You put the cart before the horse." I think maybe that's what we did. That's the conversation we should have had when, when you first came here, is, "Hey, this is what we're going to do," and, but now, you know, it sounds like, you know, you're saying November is rolled out, he says it's.
It could be.
It's a full head of steam and.
Now, everything that you talked about, I mean, the equipment that when we go about, we decided that this, the basement here would be good, you're exactly right, there's a contract, there's commitments, you know, there's a service level agreements and everything that's going to have to go, and it goes both ways. Now, what, you know, how are we going to pay for that? Don't know. We might go ahead and do something for you guys to provide between here and there, right? To offset that. That's not me, I'm not that guy.
I understand, and none of this is directed directly at you.
No, 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 I just want to let you know.
And not John or anybody else.
It's all, it's all in.
But again, we took our first opportunity to get him to you.
Yeah.
Okay, we didn't want to just bring him in here and talk to council, not knowing anything.
Well, no, no.
So we had to have some meetings with him to get the information, to get a good understanding of what this project is going to be and what it's going to look like. And so at the first opportunity, well, guess what? We brought him here, and then guess what? The meeting didn't happen. So therefore, now we're at this meeting. Thank goodness that this meeting happened. So now we're bringing him here, and we're giving him the information for you, to try to keep you informed.
Right. I agree, I'm just, you know, there's, there's, as the representatives of the city of Bucyrus, that's us seven, and eight counting Jenny, we have a responsibility that, you know, this, and nothing against anyone, that this company that began in this year is going to put equipment in our basement, and we know, know, we don't know what any contract would be, or what the benefit for us is, you know, and it sounds like this is going to begin shortly.
We're getting it all worked out, and we're bringing you the information as soon as we can.
Well, anyhow, I'm done, I just wanted to bring that to light, I didn't know if I was seeing it wrong, or. No, good question. But yeah, the stuff that you're talking about is, is a couple pay levels above me. So they're working all that stuff out with everybody, so, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And thanks for coming, and thanks, and thanks, John, I'm not, I'm just saying.
No, no, I just wanted to be clear that we're trying to keep you informed as best we can, and like I said, we want to keep the public informed as best we can as this whole thing moves forward.
Right. Please, if you think of anything, grab my card, and I'll leave you here in front of John, email me, give me a call, whatever you're most comfortable with, I'll get you an answer, and probably what I would do is CC you on any email that would come to me so that you could make sure everybody on council got them.
Absolutely.
Okay? So.
The question I got is, Dan referred to it, is what Spectrum, because we've got a contract with Spectrum right now, we got one with them.
Franchise, franchise with them for cable.
Yeah, well, yeah, we've had the discussion, you know, we will have to figure a way to replace, obviously, they'll be competing with Spectra, but replace some of that income that goes into our communications budget, too, so. So we talked, we talked briefly about that, I believe, if you want to address that.
Yeah, your franchise fees will be paid to you via state of Ohio, because they're not doing, the way it was explained to me was that the state of Ohio now is doing the franchises, and not each individual location or city. So the, any of the video fees that you would get from Spectrum, from us, they would come from the state of Ohio. from us, they would come from the state of Ohio to, to the city.
Same amount or?
To be honest with you, Dan, I don't know. I'd have to check on that. That's a good one. I, I don't know what the franchise fee is for, for us at the state of Ohio. Because I think it's the same for all of us. But what your current contract may have as a franchise fee with Spectrum, that I don't know, because I know those are all different based by city and how it's negotiated, so.
But are, are you really competing against Spectrum because you're doing basically streaming over the internet, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, because if, if I get YouTube TV or Hulu or Netflix or wherever, that's not competing with Spectrum. And so Spectrum still would have the only cable service in town.
They would have, if you would consider it that way, yeah. I mean, the way. True. But the, let me put an asterisk next to that. I have fiber into my home right now. And so what I have is I have three TVs and I have two routers, one upstairs, one downstairs. And then I have the two small boxes for the video piece of it. Those two video, all three of the video boxes are all coming off the internet, even though it looks like a typical Spectrum cable box, you know, that when you do the menu on your screen, right? It looks exactly the same thing, but it's just, everything's coming over the internet or through, through, through wireless throughout the house. So we will be competing against them head to head on internet. I mean, if you choose, you know, a lot of folks start, might not want to do the video or might not want to do phone, but we will be going head to head with them on internet for sure.
As a council, does anybody want to make a referral that does go to a committee for further discussion, for more questions, more information?
Get the cables that go to service.
I, I think it goes to a lot of different ones. If we're using the building, it's going to have to go to public lands and buildings. If we're working on the right of ways, it's going to be service, plating or zoning or something like that.
The building.
Yeah.
If we're talking about the.
Service has cable.
Any money coming in and going out is going to have to go to finance, you know? If we're renegotiating a contract or something, I don't know, so, but.
And then we'll also need to have a copy of what contracts we have out there now brought in so we know where, where we're standing with this.
Is that something you can provide?
Is that a no bid contract, you know? I mean, if we take them in, is that a no bid contract?
Is it a no bid?
Put that out for bid? We got to put out, we got to bid the usage of the tower out here, so. It's just all questions, just all questions, that's all.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was going to go ahead and make a motion to send this to Public Lands and Buildings Service and Finance.
I'll second that.
Do you, do you agree that those are the right three?
Yeah.
At least.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Wireball. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your time.
One more over here.
This says, yeah, thank you for coming. I was just going to suggest, you said Clyde and was it?
Shelby, no.
Well, maybe, maybe we could, maybe Brian could do that. Call those cities and see what their, their council went through. Maybe that would give us some insight on where we have to head next.
I've got a friend in Shelby. It's a council and I can get ahold of him.
All right. Anybody else like to speak? Okay?
Hello. My name is Taylor Perchard, 1560 Rosedale Avenue. I'm here to discuss the current situation of the road in front of my home. My home is situated between Bill Avenue and Sunset. And Rosedale was paved about 20 years ago, up until Sunset. So the current road situation that we have has been there 40 plus years. Rosedale is probably the highest traveled road in our neighborhood currently. It's also the drag strip. Currently, our road has multiple cracks, potholes, chunks of curb missing. It has currently the state of grass growing in the streets. Many of my neighbors and myself were frustrated to see a neighboring street with hill crust that has been there for about 15, 20 years when hill crust probably went into place, was repaved during the summer. And that's also along with the roadway, which is a neighboring, neighborhood across the road. That to us seemed very frustrating when we've been waiting 40 years in that area. I'm not sure how the selection of what streets get paved, but I'm asking to be strongly looked at for next year's paving that Rosedale is part of that. With the grass growing in the roads in the next few years, we may not even have a road in that area. So it's something to look at. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
I'll, I'll follow up with you. What's your phone number? If you, you want to.
Just get it afterwards.
I'll get it. I'll come over and talk to you.
Yeah, that's, I, I got to agree with you. I travel that road half a dozen times a day, so.
That's still concrete in that section, correct?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, still.
Anybody else? All right, seeing none, do we have any communications or petitions?
We do not.
Moving on, standing committee reports, plating. Public lands and buildings? Health and safety?
No report.
Finance?
Nope.
Economic development?
No report.
Service?
No report.
Traffic commission?
Well, I don't have minutes to, to read, but we did have a meeting yesterday. And we'll have a report on that as soon as we get minutes ready to go, so.
Thank you. All right. Since we didn't have any reports, we're moving on. Reports of city officials, Mr. Myers.
I have, I have no formal report, Madam President. I did want to mention a couple of things. I attended a ceremony yesterday for Northwest Senior Citizens, District Five, I think it is, in Mansfield. And at that time, Mary Lee Minor was, had been nominated and received an award for outstanding senior citizen. It's part of its five counties and all the candidates were excellent and, but Mary Lee really was, has done so much for the city. So congratulations to her. Also tonight, we had a short ceremony on the square where we put the Tree City Five Year Award on the square. Mr. Jeff Panavich, Jeff, John. Jeff's last name.
Jeff Panavich.
I thought I had, I was going to say Palentius, but that didn't sound right. That's a different family. The number one Cleveland Browns fan in the city, Mr. Jeff Panavich, was able to put the award there. So congratulations to the commission and thank you to city council for funding this vital program. And one more thing there. Saturday at 9:30 is the Suicide Prevention March. I know that quite a few people signed up already and they could use some more. I think that's on our website or, or on our Facebook page, the information on that. That begins at 9:30 to be to hospital and then come to city hall then. And that's it yet, the end of my informal report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have anything from Mr. Wireball?
I do.
Okay.
I got a couple of referrals, actually.
Okay.
We want to refer the airport master plan, possibility of doing an airport master plan to council. And let's see, what else? We need to refer the wastewater bar screen, which is in need of repair, to service and finance. And then finally, the Mary Street Sewer Project, that would go to finance as well as service. And the airport, I'm sorry, would go to public lands and finance.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may.
Yes, sir.
We also have a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant that needs to be referred for a resolution. And that's to demolish 539 North Lane Street. It's the one house left by the soccer fields there, right across the street from the concession stand on Lane Street. When Landon was still zoning administrator, he had started that project. And so the one house that we didn't get back in 2008, 2009. So we're, we're glad to be able to get that one and get that out of harm's way and get that owner to more safe, safe housing. So we need to have that referred for a possible resolution.
Public lands?
No.
Lions, smells like a good description.
Health and safety or?
Health and safety and finance.
Yeah.
What about the one that's, I don't remember the name of the street, Clinton?
Yeah.
Yeah. We still got, what do we have, order two houses?
One.
There's one left down there. The other one burned.
Yeah. Still got one there.
Yeah.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I would like to move to send the airport master plan.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I got a question for, for the mayor on the wastewater. I don't think it has to go to finance because there's no money involved in it. They're just transferring money out of the same item for it. So there's no, no appropriations for it. I think it just has to go to service, I think. Just, okay?
Well, I think finance handles transfers, right?
I think there's, I think there's money, I think there's money in the budget for it.
Yeah, there is.
Yes. Okay, so then straight finance and.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, like, can you speak on the rash of sewer water line breaks here in the last couple of weeks? Is there a reason or what?
Typically, you get those in the winter time.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've had our own.
Just coincidence or what?
Matter of fact, we had one breaker from the fire department there. And Mrs. Dewine was here promoting that in the library, Imagination Library. And that had to be changed to city hall. So I, in a very, it can be, no, I don't know, there's no rhyme or reason to that, except, except under the city streets is aging infrastructure. And it's, every day it's getting older, so.
You know what? If they had an infrastructure grant, maybe the federal government put out, maybe we could get some of that money.
Well, I think there is one.
Okay, well, why don't you look into that?
I think he's might have mentioned that.
I think he's done it a lot.
We are looking, we are looking into that.
Okay. I'll just go.
We do replace water lines as we have, as we have funds. And then there was time, as you could see, it's, when something pops up, we fix it.
Anybody else? All right, Mr. Myers was about to make a motion.
I'd like to move to send the airport master plan to public lands, building and finance, the wastewater bar screen to service, the Mary Street Sewer to service and finance, and the FEMA grant resolution to health and safety and finance.
Do we have a second? I wish my Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Water Drucker.
So council and others have asked about derelict properties. Currently, this year, I'm looking at 455 West Mansfield, which is the old trailer, removal home park that the city acquired. There are three buildings at the top of the hill. 1019 Maple Street was a trailer, which the woman that lived there has been gone for quite some time. 206 Jump Street is a, I think the house burnt down or got torn down, but the garage is still standing. 415 West Warren Street is the Warren Street property that's now caught on fire twice in the past two years. And then 450 Dudley Street. The first three that I mentioned will be much easier because they're either owned by the city or have been foreclosed on by the county. So I have the authority through different code sections to go through and perform asbestos inspections, which is the step I'm at now. 415 Warren Street, I'll have to get a warrant from the Crawford County Municipal Court to go do an asbestos inspection. And 450 Dudley Street, I'm trying to find, I know where the lady that lives, used to live there is at. I'm just trying to get her to respond so either they can consent to us searching it for asbestos or I get a warrant. So procedurally, once I have a certificate, which is required by the EPA on those properties, that they're either free from asbestos or whatever the cost to remediate. After the properties have been deemed asbestos free, then I have to publish twice in the paper to have bids come in. And then we can proceed on demolishing because they've all been declared, you know, derelict, dangerous properties that need to, basically have been condemned. And there's a final order of demolition given to the property owners that none of those have complied with demolishing them on their own. So I get that it's sort of a long and frustrating process and people ask about what's going on? Why hasn't, you know, like Warren Street, why has it sat there for two years and nothing has happened? But it's an interesting, not interesting, but a frustrating process because you're dealing with private property rights and, you know, knocking down other people's properties got a lot of red tape. But that's where we're at. So it's not just sitting there waiting to be further deteriorated. And there, I get that there's a long list of other properties, but those are the ones that I felt were accessible and in need of, like Warren Street, you guys are aware, but it's caught on fire twice. Dudley Street, we've talked about multiple times. I think there is an issue with Dudley Street, but I forget exactly what that is. But that's the list and hopefully by the end of November, those will all be demolished. And the city then can put the price for demolition back on the tax of the ones that we don't know, which is sort of a arbitrary tax because they're not going to probably pay it, but we can foreclose and sell them, get money we get out of them and move on. There's a camper on Aura Street on properties that we demolished a couple of years ago when Rob was the law director, that somebody has now parked a camper on. But we don't own that property, so it's a little bit difficult. But I think probably foreclosing on those properties because they owe $12,000 plus in taxes based upon our demolition costs. But then once the city owns them, we can go on and move off the camper and move on from that property then. But I get it and we're not ignoring it, just the process, but that's where we're at on those. This Bussiris Public Library needs a renewal levy, which they would like, I think they have to put on the ballot in May of 2023. We are their taxing authority or taxing, yeah, the taxing authority for Bussiris Public Library. And so I agree, a referral from council to send that to finance committee to begin the process. It's not any emergency, but we do need everything done in a relatively quick manner. Just in general, they need to have everything to the board of elections by February to get on the May ballot.
I think in the past, we sent that through economic development because it didn't involve any of our money.
Yeah, you can refer to both and I'll figure it out by the time we get there on Thursday. It could be. Other than that, we do have the pending lawsuit concerning the tower. I haven't really looked too much into that. Another two weeks to respond. And lawyers are procrastinating, we just can check. I apologize for that. I think that's in committee, right? Everyone has a number.
It is.
We can talk about that in finance committee on Thursday. Not probably, no, public lands. So if it's not in public lands, there would be a referral to discuss that further in public lands. It is already there.
Yeah, because we had legislation requests that came out of it and never made it to the floor.
True.
True, yes. Other than that, there were some questions about Shine's Art Park. Council passed a resolution or ordinance that we would be able to purchase it. I've never actually found the agreement where Mr. Godwin and the city signed off on that, so we're still looking for that. But the city owns that wall, so we don't really necessarily, we don't have an easement. We don't need an easement because it's our wall. But I don't really think that wholesale affects the city much. And I don't think anybody really wants to buy a Midwest furniture building either, but that would be, there was a question about that in public lands a couple of weeks ago. I don't know. If you guys don't have any questions, that's all I have for today. Oh, jeez.
Yes.
I do have a question and maybe John and you can answer. West Southern Avenue is a R1 district. And I won't mention where exactly on West Southern. There is a property that has a container storage within a foot and a half or two feet of the property line, which is not allowed, to my understanding. Has anything developed with that?
I can answer that.
I can answer that. Yes, a site visit was made, and I did speak with the property owner briefly while I was on site, and, you know, he naturally...he was upset that, you know, there was an issue with the container that has been placed on his property, and he had spoken to his attorney. His attorney reached out to me and talked about possible solutions for that, and so one of the solutions is to relocate that container and move it possibly to the backyard where it would be compliant with the setback requirements. So I'm working with the attorney to try to come to a resolution on this.
And I was just curious, with that, isn't it also has to be a permanent structure, not a container-type building?
Well, actually, no.
I'm just asking, I'm not sure.
Actually, no. With our zoning code that we do have, it doesn't state that it has to be a shed or an accessory structure. It doesn't necessarily have to be on any kind of a permanent foundation. And typically in the city, containers like that, other people have placed them on their property, and they're classified as a shed or some other sort of accessory structures. Now, other neighbors, they paint them up and they look aesthetically pleasing, but our zoning code doesn't address the aesthetics of those structures.
I just wanted to make sure, but you're in the process of having it moved.
Well...
But you're in discussion.
Yeah, and there may be some dispute as to where that property line truly is, because when we look on GIS, it looks like there may be more room than the alleged foot and a half, so that may be something that may need to be clarified also. Because I'll tell you, the way it looks on GIS, it may be close, and it may take a survey to see where that side lot line truly is, because if that container is far enough away, it can stay right where it is, provided the owner gets a permit. So there's a lot of things to...a lot of details to work out before we can just start any sort of prosecution.
I just happen to think of it right now, and I know the...
Yeah, I know.
Other person is wanting to know.
But I spoke with that person today also.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's...
Lot of details to work out.
That's fine. That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Yes, very welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to send the public library resolution for their levy renewed to economic development and finance.
So I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Ms. Sherrick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other questions for the law director?
One final comment. I think Dan talked about vacant property legislation and updating our property maintenance code a month ago or something, and so I'll bring that Thursday. And we don't...I can't find...I think Rob did a...Mr. Radliff did a rough draft, but I have to get ahold of him to see where it's at. But I do have vacant property legislation.
Those of us that were here then should have that in our emails. I'll see if I can find it and forward it back to you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I have found some stuff.
Mine's still hanging out there, I'm sure, in my email.
And I know Gordon Grove, our property maintenance guy, has some ideas and some thoughts as well.
There are some other communities real close by that have vacant property registration requirements.
Yes, we plagiarized this one.
And you can use those as an example. I know some of those that were reasonably well.
Right.
Okay.
Bring it Thursday.
Yes.
I'm pretty sure the one I found is plagiarized from that community.
From several communities.
Let me make you say that.
Mayor, anything else?
The mayor forgot to take all of the language of that community out of it.
That's okay.
All right, Ms. Schiffer.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a couple of referrals tonight. Since we are adding a deputy auditor position to the billlet, we also need to add the position to the manpower ordinance with a salary range the same as the auditor clerk positions. And also, we'll need to appropriate an additional $9,000 to the training and education line and the safety forces levy to train another cadet for the police department, and I have attached a letter from Chief Ostenheimer explaining the reasoning for that, and I will have those breakdowns for the finance meeting.
All right, do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Potter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anything else?
And I also have the treasurer's report that I passed out. She sent that to me in my email this morning, so I'm just passing that along.
All right. I have a motion to accept and file the treasurer's report. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Don't have anything from Chief Ostenheimer. Chief Shumley may have a motion to accept city officers' reports.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Spiegel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. No visitors present. Moving on, consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
All right, we have Proposed Ordinance 42-2022, and if I could note, in your packets, some of the dates are wrong, but the ordinance and resolution numbers are correct. They came that way from the law clerk, and I didn't catch it, so thank you, Mr. Young. Proposed Ordinance 42-2022, amending and supplementing Ordinance Number 54-2021 being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2022 by the creation of an ARPA 2022 Ohio Criminal Justice Fund subparagraph containing a police department category containing a personal services line item, further by the creation of a local fiscal recovery fund 2021 fund subparagraph containing a general government category containing a contractual services line item, further by the creation of a 2023 crime victims assistance fund subparagraph containing a victim advocate category containing a personal services line item and materials and supplies line item, and finally, by the creation of a 2023 Victims of Crime Act Fund subparagraph containing a victim advocate category containing a personal services line item and declaring an emergency. Proposed Ordinance 43-2022, amending and supplementing Ordinance Number 54-2021 being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2022 by appropriating from unappropriated ARPA 2022 Ohio Criminal Justice Funds the sum of $334,000 to the personal services line item being within the police department category within the ARPA 2022 Ohio Criminal Justice Fund subparagraph, further by appropriating from unappropriated local fiscal recovery fund 2021 funds the sum of $31,022 to the contractual services line item being within the general government category within the local fiscal recovery fund 2021 subparagraph, further by appropriating from unappropriated 2023 crime victims assistance funds the sum of $10,340 to the personal services line item and $250 to the materials and supplies line item within both of said line items being within the victim advocate category within the 2023 crime victims assistance subparagraph, and finally, by appropriating from unappropriated 2023 Victims of Crime Act Funds the sum of $5,000 to the personal services line item being within the victim advocate category within the 2023 Victims of Crime Act subparagraph and declaring an emergency. Proposed Ordinance 44-2022, amending Ordinance Number 12-2020 as amended by Ordinance Number 42-2020, the table of human resources staffing organization for the city of Bussaras, Ohio and declaring an emergency. And lastly, proposed resolution 234-2022, a resolution authorizing and directing the Bussaras Public Safety Service Director on behalf of the city of Bussaras, Ohio to enter into a contract for the installation of a new weather alert siren at the Bussaras wastewater treatment plant not to exceed $31,022, finally, to authorize and direct the Bussaras city auditor to draw a warrant or warrants and payment therefore from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations and declaring an emergency.
May I have a motion to accept these as first reading?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Ms. Sherrick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public for participation. Moving on, referring back to originated committee, proposed ordinance 42-2022 back to finance, proposed ordinance 43-2022 back to finance, proposed ordinance 44-2022 refer back to finance, and proposed resolution 234-2022 refer back to health and safety. Committee report on pending legislation, finance.
Okay, finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 42-2022. Finance is also favorable to proposed ordinance 43-2022, and finally, finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 44-2022.
And health and safety?
Health and safety is favorable to proposed resolution 234-2022.
All right, further consideration of pending legislation, ordinance number 42-2022. For the second, third readings of proposed ordinance 42-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Wireball.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers, yes. Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers, yes. Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Ordinance 42-2022 is duly adopted. Ordinance 43-2022, for the second and third readings of proposed ordinance, number 43-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wireball, a second by Mr. McKeever.
Wireball?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers, yes. Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers, yes. Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Ordinance number 43-2022 is duly adopted.
Sorry.
No, that's all right. Ordinance number 44-2022, for the second, third readings of proposed ordinance 44-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Spiegel.
McKeever?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers, yes. Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Is it everybody?
That is.
Okay, sorry. Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 44-2022?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wireball, a second by Mr. Young.
Wireball?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers, yes. Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Sherrick?